Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. I call this meeting to order on December 17, 2019 at 5:30, 5 PM. We will have a presentation from the DPSS Point in Time Presentation, which is, I actually allow, Kim, if you want to mention what it stands for exactly, I know it's Disabled Program Services?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council, it's the Department of Public Social Services, which includes Child Protection, Adult Self-Sufficiency, and a myriad other programs. Are we, are we good to go then? Are you, is everyone here familiar with the Homeless Point in Time Count? Does everyone know what that means? Okay, great, I'm Kim Trone with the DPSS, Department of Public Social Services. I'd like to introduce Tony Ordigo. He is one of our executives with the Point in Time Count and oversees the Continuum of Care, which really manages a lot of the resources and activities that go into addressing homelessness. So, you want to kick us off, Tony?
Again, again, everyone, thank you for having me over this evening, and I thank you for taking an interest in our Point in Time Count. I'm here today to explain to all of you what the Point in Time Count is. For those of you who have a good idea, perhaps you'll pick up something that you weren't familiar with. So, our Point in Time Count is an annual event that we have for some federal funding, our Housing Urban Development Funding that comes through once every year. Our Point in Time Count is kind of, that takes a pivoting role in helping us to determine how much funding we're going to get for the homeless in our county as well as other counties throughout the nation. In addition to that, our Point in Time Count also acts as a good indicator or gauge for both state funding as well. State funding normally, again, is revolves around what our Point in Time Count shows, and it's really important for the different communities such as Moreno Valley, Riverside, Paris, and so forth throughout our counties to help our continuum of care for Riverside County's continuum of care, to help them identify where would, where best resources should be invested in.
I'm just going to piggyback on this year and say that this year, for the first time, we're counting people who are living in their cars. I am a resident of Moreno Valley and I know that places where I shop, there are people living in their cars, and I know we see that throughout the county and throughout our communities. So, that's been a really nice addition along with working alongside UCR to improve our data collection. We're totally technical now, and, and so I'll let Tony, I didn't mean to jump in there.
No, that's fine, and again, I have a PowerPoint presentation, and tonight I was given a little bit of a different version, so bear with me. So, the Point in Time Count, as I mentioned, is federally mandated by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. It is a, an event that's used to collect data on, that reflects a snapshot. It's one day of the year, so a quick snapshot of the population that we, of the homeless population that we have here in Riverside County. The Point in Time Count data, again, plays a critical role in our CLC competition for our Notice of Funding Availability, an application that we, we, DPSS, Riverside County Department of Social Services, CLC Core Group, and CLC stands for Continuum of Care, that, that manages the federal and state funding, excuse me, that comes into our county. So, a quick overview would be to kind of help you understand what, what those numbers mean. So, in Riverside County, in 2019 January, we did our Point in Time Count, and we recognized that we had 2,811 sheltered and unsheltered homeless adults and children countywide. The breakdown is as, is as, our, our veterans, out of that number, our veterans accounted for 107, which was, which was an increase of eight percent over our 2018 count. As far as youth ages 18 to 24, they accounted for 181 of our total 2,811. That was a two, two percent increase from the previous year's Point in Time Count. Our elderly ages 62 and over, again, these are interviews only, they accounted for 129 totaled unsheltered individuals for our 2019 Point in Time Count, and that was a 16 percent increase from the previous year. And I want to bring that to your attention because this year, we are focusing a lot on the youth and the aging population, the elderly, who are 62 and over. We're expecting nationwide, and particularly in this county, which is one of the fastest growing counties in the state, to continue to see an increase unfortunately in that elderly population homelessness. And that'll help us to determine better strategies and interventions that we can use towards our homeless population. Children 17 and under, we counted 15 out of the 2,800-plus individuals. Families with children, we accounted for two unsheltered in 2019. Yes, that's, does seem very low. Unfortunately, as you know, I'm sus, we're suspecting that that number is very unrepresented of, of that population. That's a population that's very hard to categorize and to, and to recognize as well because during the period of, of the time in the morning when we do the time, the Point in Time Count, they may not be as accessible, and, and so we don't come across them as often. So, that's one of the theories that we, we recognize that the, the total amount for two is, is very low. Of the youth count, which is total, 196 total unsheltered was for the 2019, an eight percent increase over the 2018 year. And the chronically homeless, 727 totaled unsheltered Point in Time Count individuals, and that was a staggering 88 percent increase over the 2018. As for District Five Overview, 20, we had a 21 percent decrease 2019 versus 2018. That may be, again, accounted for individuals being somewhat under, undercounted and, and the migratory patterns that they may take from city to city unfortunately. In addition to that, that underrepresentation may be due to not having enough volunteers in certain areas such as District Five to cover the entire district, you know, well. And one of the things that I want to bring to your attention is that our increase of total unsheltered and sheltered individuals for 2019 Homeless Point in Time Count was up by about 21 percent. Keep in mind, that may have been due to an improved methodology that we utilized, and these methodologies are set forth by the Housing and Urban Development. So, we increased our methodology, we also increased our technology. We used the Survey 123 app, which was a, a very crucial tool that many counties throughout the state of California was able to utilize as well. So, that's why not only in Riverside County but other counties, the majority of the other counties in the state saw a staggering increase in their Point in Time Count.
And just really quick to clarify for the public, District Five, can you mention what cities are included in that?
Sure, let's take a look.
And need like Banning, Beaumont?
Yeah, we have Banning, Beaumont, Calamasa, Menifee, Moreno Valley, Paris, and the unincorporated areas which are very large.
Okay, thanks, and that's where you said the 21 percent decrease?
Yes, yes, for District, for, for District Five. So, those might be some of the reasons. In, in addition to that, we also want to recognize our community partners in District Five and all the help that they do. A lot of the nonprofit agencies as well as our faith-based agencies, as well as our governmental agencies on, in the county, as well as the city agencies, all, I'm quite sure have played a part in trying to decrease homeless as well. Any questions, any other questions so far? Okay, the methodology, again, we use survey-based count. It was a multi-day count. That means a survey of people, we surveyed people at various social service locations and other public and private locations to identify who were unsheltered versus who were not sheltered, and who could be counted and those who could not be counted. The unsheltered count was comprised of individuals and families with a primary nighttime residence, that's a public or private place not designed for an ordinary use as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings. And again, that follows the standard definition for HUD. It also included the street-based count, service-based count, follow-up count and survey, and the unincorporated youth. And I also want to bring to your attention that this year, we're also planning on focusing very heavily on a lot of the unincorporated areas in Riverside County. Riverside County being a geographically very large county, it plays a huge challenge for us because of the unincorporated areas are so, so vast. Homeless challenges, thank you, Kim. Obviously, for many of you who recognize, mental health is a big challenge for a lot of our homeless individuals. I want to caution us to, to, to further, further adding to the stigma of homeless individuals. It's not that all homeless individuals have mental illness, but we can fairly say that many individual, individuals that we see, we suspected that they are, that they are suffering from some form of mental illness because of, of, of the, the, of the readiness to make themselves available in the public. Unfortunately, you may see a lot of individuals walking on the streets who are homeless and displaying signs, signs that may be indicative of mental illness or behavioral health conditions. What we don't see is that also the, the large population of homeless individuals who don't, don't have a mental illness. They're not likely to be as prevalent in the community. We may not see them as much around, hanging around shopping centers and displaying behaviors that may get our, our attention unfortunately. Substance use is also a big problem that we have with, with the homeless population here in the state of California as well as the nation. Obviously, socioeconomic conditions leading to deep poverty and public health issues. All of those really create very large challenges amongst our homeless population. Addressing homeless together, that's why we're here tonight at this venue. We are really pushing, we as in Department of Social Services and the Continuum of Care, we are really trying to help the communities recognize that homelessness is a community issue. We applaud cities like Moreno Valley and neighboring cities for really stepping it up and trying to get involved. Our, again, our faith-based and our, and many of the nonprofit agencies really do play a large part in assisting the homeless population, both getting them back on their feet or into some type of housing and/or other services that's necessary for them to improve their lives. Working collaboratively with each city will create some stepping stones towards a comprehensive, comprehensive regional approach to addressing of the various homeless needs. And so, we again, are going around the county expressing that collaboration, and that is pretty indicative of what our Continuum of Care and Board of Governments is, is hoping for as well. How do we get involved? So, we can get involved again by making it known that we do have a Point in Time Count that's coming about, and the importance of the Point in Time Count as far as us, Riverside County applying for grant funding. Volunteering registration ends January 20th. So, I'd encourage all of you to get involved with your, with your family, with your community, even in business owners and those individuals who are interested in improving their community, to encourage them to volunteer. We, last year in Riverside County, we had a large increase in, in our volunteers, which really helped us out. We believe that's one of the reasons why we saw an increase in the homeless count population. I believe we had an increase of roughly about 40 percent or maybe 50 percent of, in volunteers. We are looking for a large increase in our volunteers for the youth this year. Last year, we had, I believe, less than 200. This year, we're looking at having a little over 350-plus individuals, or hoping to get 350-plus individuals volunteering just, just on the youth side as well. Opportunities, we, again, we, our Point in Time Count will be conducted on January 29, from 5:30 AM to 9:30 AM for the adults. And our youth Point in Time Count will be Thursday, January 29 through the 31st, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I do have some information and some flyers in the back. If you are interested in taking these, I'd appreciate it. And there is some information on who to, who to contact as well as information on how to register. All volunteers, again, must have a smartphone because we will be using an application called Survey 123. So, you know, really, the criteria is you should have the ability to do a lot of walking and the ability to have, and have your own smartphone and be able to use it for this particular event. Any further questions?
Well, actually, I was going to ask, as far as, I haven't actually done this before, but, so they download the app, and then do they get like routes? Do individuals get certain routes, or does everybody have, you know, or go ahead?
Yes, Mayor, so, so again, I'm, I didn't introduce this, but I'm fairly new to our Point in Time Count. As of about seven months ago, I became the Deputy Director over our Continuum of Care for Department of Social Services. So, it's my understanding that we do have vantage points throughout the city. So, there are a number of locations that we use as deployment sites, and depending on how many people sign up, for example, in District Five, we will route them to certain areas, for example, Moreno Valley, Banning, and so forth. On the registration, it does ask what, what your preference would be as far as the city you would like to serve. And we try to coordinate at the deployment sites who's going where. So, you get there, we have the facilitators who are there, and to assign areas for people to go out and scout and provide the surveys to individuals who, who are homeless.
And then you just take an average?
We, we actually take electronic count via the app, and we, we are looking to do more survey counts. Last year and years prior, we also did non-survey counts. And again, that's for individuals who perhaps did not want to participate in the survey, but we clearly had an indication perhaps that they were homeless. So, we were, were able to take a, a non-survey count and identify those individuals. And, and the challenges that go along with that, and trying to identify the appropriate age group for them to fall into is, can be challenging. Obviously, we can recognize the youth from adult, but sometimes it's very difficult to, to categorize an approximate age for the adults.
And is there any way that we can help? I mean, maybe just letting people know to volunteer for these opportunities, or?
Yes, I will let Mario give a little bit of information.
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Mario Gray. Obviously, you guys already know me, hello, everyone. Yes, there is a great way that you guys can get involved. I know you guys have an amazing website that's won tons of awards. It'd be a great opportunity to post something on there to make sure that residents know about this. I think it's really important that we partner up. You know, Supervisor Jeff Hewitt's office is available for you guys to use as a deployment center if you guys would like. We're using a Youth Advisory Council that they will be participating for this as well. So, if you want to include your youth program to get involved with the youth count, that's also something that you can, that you can do to, to help. So, there's a lot of things that the city can do, and really it comes down to being open to opportunities. I mentioned to someone just in the audience here that DPSS is willing to provide one of their season coordinators to come and help you guys build the grid that you guys can use to deploy, deploy volunteers. And really, this app has really changed the entire game of counting folks because before, it was all handwritten, so the numbers are, become very skewed. Everybody has different kind of way of writing their numbers. If you can, if it wasn't legible, you couldn't use it. What this, what this app does, it creates those X and Y coordinates so you can know if it's in Moreno Valley, if it's in Riverside, wherever that might be. Every single street will be marked, and every single point will be marked. So, we'll know exactly where they will be. And with this data, we can create GIS maps, hot maps, so we can, we can provide the city data that they can use to kind of deploy those services that they might need. So, for example, your Salvation Army project, which has been very successful, can be used in a larger scale depending on what this GIS maps do. Another thing that we can do is we'll send you, I'll email you guys out, or Kim will, the, the social media kit, and this will be able, you guys can use it to, to, you know, release it on your social media so everyone can, can know what's going on. And I obviously will share that on Supervisor Hewitt's Facebook and Instagram and Twitter accounts.
Is this the first time that you guys are doing the app, or?
Second time.
Oh, okay, second time.
And it continues? Actually, the, the Point in Time, the technology piece just got a big award today from the State California Association of Counties because it's really integrating with UCR and really improving the app and our ability to collect data. You were asking about the survey. You would go, you would register for the survey, and then you'll get the survey on your phone. It's not quite up ready yet, but get registered, and then it's all, there's ways to eliminate duplication and things like that through the technology piece.
That's what I was about to ask, like, how do you avoid, you know, like, if I count somebody, and then what if, you know, Councilmember Cabrera goes by there?
Sure, no, that's a good, it's, you, you possibly could, and so they, there's a couple of questions that are meant to identify duplication, but they've built in some different things into the technology so that they've got it pretty, pretty down so that there should not be much duplication. It would be very rare, but it's not impossible, that's for sure.
If someone gets double?
Yeah, but it's not going to be highly likely.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you, go ahead, Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
Thank you so much for coming and presenting. This is a very important count, and as stated, this is really what determines how much money we receive for homeless from not only the federal government but the state government. So, I've participated in two past Point in Time Counts. Councilmember Cabrera also, last year, I think Mayor Protiembaka, we had Marshall Ironman, our CFO. And so, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned the Youth Point in Time Count was done last year. I've never heard of the Youth Point in Time Count before, so I'm happy to hear that. That is something that's going on. I just want to make sure residents know that when you register to be involved in a Point in Time Count, you can actually pick the Moreno Valley location to participate in, and I would, I would encourage, I would say, people should do two things. They should go skydiving and do the Homeless Point in Time Count because they're both life-changing.
Yes.
It really breaks apart any stereotype that you might have, but at the same time, you're actually out there talking to these people and hearing about the challenges that they're having. Can you go back to the original slide that mentioned all the different statistics of the different demographics of homeless? Yes, this breakdown.
Sorry, yeah.
So, I have a question concerning the youth, I'm sorry, the children, and then you have youth count total. What's the difference between the children 17 or under as 15 total unsheltered, and then two slots below that, the youth count total?
Youth is used quite often to also include young adults through the age of 24.
But then you have youth at the top of between 18 and 24.
Okay, that, then, we'll have to come back to that and look at that, and it's probably, yeah, it's probably a mistake.
Okay, so, yeah, if we can get some accurate numbers on the, on that, the, the youth between 18 and 24, and then the children 17 and under. And then also, you didn't really define what, what is chronically homeless? So, how do you all define chronically homeless?
Councilmember, I believe that the numbers are accurate. The youth 18 to 24 specifically for that breakdown, and then the youth count total also includes, I believe, those, those children with families.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll clarify.
But we'll, we'll double-check that for you guys, but I believe the numbers are accurate.
Okay. The chronically homeless, how do y'all define that?
Chronically homeless would be individuals who have, who have a history, obviously, of being homeless. Homeless, again, from the HUD's definition, is an individual whose prior night stay was in, in an, a, a condition that's not meant for hu, human habitation. So, when we look at individuals, whether they've been homeless for, you know, several weeks and/or a couple of years, I think we need to recognize that, I believe, the chronically homeless is individuals who have continued to be homeless within the past 12 months or past year and a half.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was the same definition that, that we've used, but to also educate the public for people that are listening.
Correct, and, and, I'm sorry, and I can follow up with a more specific and confirmed definition.
Okay, and then also for the veterans, I'm kind of, it is, that's an interesting number to he, to hear from, to read because we also say that Riverside County, we've reached functional zero considering, considering veterans homelessness. And so, when we're going out doing Point in Time Count and we identify a vet, we know that right away, we can contact VA Loma Linda, and they can be in a bed the same day, right? And so, my, my question to you all is, when you're saying that there's 107 veterans, are these people self-identifying as veterans? Are we checking that they're actually a vet with the DD 214? That they're, that we're following the federal definition of veterans? Because someone who's been dishonorably discharged from the military or served during an area that was in conflict is not considered technically a veteran concerning the federal definition. So, I'm wondering with that number, is that something that you all are keeping, tracking?
Yes, so my understanding is, yes, we are asking to, that they confirm it. In addition to that, any, any veteran that we come across that is homeless, we are able to provide them transportation that day to the qualified centers that may be opportunities for them to be housed, and we do work closely with the Veterans Administration Center on that.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for presenting, first of all, for being here. First is just more of a comment. I know that you mentioned for the, for the actual count itself, you're looking for a lot of volunteers, that you need more than we have had before. And Mario, you mentioned the YAC, the Youth Advisory Council, which would be good because there's a lot of members in that. Just more of a suggestion as well, in case you're looking, because if you're trying to make contact with youth, you know, it's, I think it's better that you have youth making that contact, right? It's easier to get answers from those questions. So, maybe working closer with the colleges, right? Like Moreno Valley College and their clubs that they have there, a lot of their departments as well for like Health and Human Services. There's a lot of people on that college, and even places like UCR, who I believe would be very happy to volunteer for this day. So, just kind of an idea there. I'm sure you're already incorporating that as well. And then two questions for you. The first one has to do with the funding. So, you, you did mention briefly about the funding that comes from the federal and the state governments, and there's ways that that's calculated, right? So, can you share a little bit more detail regarding, you know, how the number of homeless that is concluded by this Point in Time Count? Like, how, how is that correlated to the amount of funding that we get? And when that funding is, is calculated, does it all go to the state, and then it comes down? Or does some of it go directly to the city? So, can you share a little bit more?
Sure, so generally speaking, because I, I don't have the exact calculations that each formula uses only because of the complexities of, of each grant. But there, there, we have received what's called heap and cash grants in the past from the state, and there, there's an irony to that. So, when homeless count goes up, typically with the, with the federal funding through HUD, we are, are scored somewhat lower, and so there's a, there's a rating on how counties or Continuum of Cares are scored, and, and, pardon me. And in a, and it's based upon the Point in Time Count. So, with the federal government, we, as the count goes up, our score goes down, which, which eventually will equate to less funding. When the count goes up for state, we get more funding. So, there is kind of a little bit of a balance. So, within the past year, we've received a little bit more state funding. In addition to that, the government has had some pretty hefty initiatives to combat the, the homeless crisis. So, that's also helped with, with not necessarily just looking at the numbers, but also looking at areas that, you know, that, that may be considered a little bit more in need. So, the federal government, again, takes, takes it on a scoring ra, ratio. The state doesn't necessarily look at it from a scoring ratio. They look at the numbers, and they disperse the funding through the COCs. Some of the funding, although, will go directly to cities if they qualify. There, the state identified 16 cities this year to, to receive direct funding, Riverside being one of them. They're basically metropolitan areas, I believe, that are rather large, 300 or 350,000 and above.
Thank you, and one last question regarding how, how the areas or locations are actually decided. You know, the past two years I've been out there, and so we get split up into groups, and then we get sent out to a certain area, and we're accompanied by our deputies, right? Our officers go out there with us. But how is that, how are those locations selected? Who makes that decision? You know, I know that it's, it's limited by how many volunteers actually participate, but, you know, who picks the location where we go, who, who makes that decision?
Generally, before, before the actual count, you know, the cities and municipalities, the county has some general idea, and prior to the count, usually 20, between 72 and 24 hours, individuals will go out and sort of assess and surveil so that they can determine where it's more highly likely that you will encounter homeless individuals to be counted. So, that's one of the advantages of having more volunteers. We're able to disperse to places where people might be less visible and less seen, even on a soft count. And we will be looking at cars this year, you know. We're not really going into RVs at this point, but cars, we all, we all recognize are becoming a habitat for many individuals and families.
Thank you very much.
Just, just add to that, to answer the question a little more direct, you, you guys decide how the, the Point in Time Count is done in your city. Some cities have their, their sheriff's department or their code enforcement that deal with the day-to-day operation, so they see the homeless more often. But at the end of the day, you But at the end of the day, you guys can decide whether you go to three locations decided by your sheriff's department or you can decide to go through every single street that your city has, based obviously on the availability of volunteers. Though the soft count is done prior, there's something that hampers a little bit of what happens on the actual day of counting. Some folks might get, some homeless people might get terrified of that. If a police officer approaches them three days before the count, they might leave. So the day of the count, that homeless person might not be there anymore. They might leave to a different location that the council might choose not to visit because a sheriff told them to go to that particular location. So we have to keep in mind how you guys map out the entire city.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mario. Thank you so much, Kim, and thank you to the Department of Public Social Services. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, thank you, and that ends our special presentations. And then Steve, our media person, I think he normally likes two minutes, so we'll just give him two minutes and then we'll get started in our meeting.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular meeting to order on December seventeen, twenty nineteen, at six twelve PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by, okay, how about, is Frank here? No, Frank's not here, okay. Rafael? Okay, Rafael, who is also a Planning Commissioner, Rugerres. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Chaplain Brent E. Sherrick from Moreno Valley Police Department.
Can everyone stand, put their hand over their heart and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Would you please bow your heads with me? Father God, we just come before there right now, Lord, and we would just ask, Lord, that you would be in the midst of this meeting, Lord, Father God, that you would help direct and guide the conversations that are going to go on here tonight, Lord. And maybe decisions that are going to be made, Lord, that they would be made without any bias, without any prejudice, but they would be made in the best interest of the people they represent, Lord. And for those that are making any of those decisions, Lord, that they would be able to make them without any bias and without any prejudice, Lord. And give them that wisdom and that discernment to make the hard decisions that may need to be made tonight. And Lord, I'd also ask that you would, also as we're getting into our Christmas and holiday season, Lord, that you would just allow people to just take time to be with their family and their friends and to rest from the business of their days, Lord. So, Lord, we thank you for that and we ask this in God's Holy Son's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Chaplain Brent, for those kind words and invocation. I appreciate that, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Marquez and Mayor Pro Tembaca are absent.
All right, thank you. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hacquesnades, City Clerk.
Jessica Lombardinad, Minister of Assistance.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kestonowitz, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, interim City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Patty Nevens, Acting Community Development Director.
Mike Kohler, Administration Lieutenant, Moreno Valley Sheriff's Station.
Abdul Ahmed, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
All right, thank you, and welcome to staff, welcome to everyone that's here. Just a friendly reminder, we do have Spanish translation services. If anyone needs them, they're right there in the back. Also, the blue speaker slips, if you'd like to speak on any item that's on non-agenda items, please make sure that you fill that out. And then if you'd like to speak on any of the agenda items, that's actually done in between when the agenda item is called. And each of those are three minutes as well. Just briefly, just because we are missing two other council members, Mayor Pro Tembaca and also Councilmember Marquez, I'm going to ask if there's consensus from my colleagues that we move item G two, which is a selection of Mayor Pro Tem to January seventh? If you guys are fine with that? Yeah, okay, okay, so we'll go ahead and move that to January seventh. And then we'll go ahead and go straight to, actually, before that, let's just go ahead and go into G two, really, G one, which is recommended updates. We'll do that one first. Pavement management, five-year look, five-year look ahead, report of public works. Let's go straight to the business and then we'll do the other stuff.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor indicated, this is an update to our pavement management plan, our five-year look ahead. I got a presentation. Just put some stats on the first slide here. A little over five hundred center line miles in the city. This is the city's largest physical asset, over six hundred million dollars as an asset. We have quite a bit of critical repairs and deferred maintenance. Again, listed up there on the slide, a hundred million dollars in critical repairs and two hundred and fifty million dollars of deferred maintenance. So the pavement management plan, the intent, here's to focus those resources, identify the priorities. And in the staff report, list the selection criteria that we use to make this recommendation to council. The original pavement management plan, five-year look ahead, was looked at and approved by council back in March of this year. We are, what we're trying to do tonight is update that for the fifth year. The intent is to be a five-year rolling period so that we can identify those priorities for the next five years. So the majority of what we're doing tonight is to add that fifth year. We are making some minor adjustments to some of the prior segments. That's enlisted in the staff report, if there's any questions on that. So just quickly, this is obviously not meant to be seen, but just to be looked at from a perspective. This is the pavement management plan, the five-year look ahead maps. These are identified by fiscal year, different colors. And we bring in the last fiscal year, which in this map would be green, but what I've done here is I've listed the streets out, so if there's any questions tonight about specific streets. Everything that's in the other colors besides that light green on the bottom right are ones that were already on the list, already approved by council. So the fifth year for arterials is listed down there on the bottom right. This is the local streets. These are the residential streets. And as identified in the original pavement management plan, the intent here is to try to focus in on the CBG target areas for using, to maximize the use of those funds. Again, this is showing the five years, with the fifth year, the new year being that light green. And this is the listed streets and I've enlarged the last portion, so if there are any questions about the specific streets, we can talk to those, but those are the thirty-seven streets that are recommended to be added for that fifth year. So our recommendation for council is to concur with the updated pavement management plan, five-year look ahead. That concludes them.
Thank you, Michael, and you know, and just to the public know that, I mean, for the most part, I think from two thousand and seven, two thousand and fourteen, or fifteen, there was really a lot of money put into the streets and there was no, you know, funds that were really allocated to that. But I really applaud, you know, this council, you know, in really approving the budget and really moving forward and doing this five-year plan and we're actually doing something about it. And this year, in fact, you know, if you're driving around town, you'll notice that there's already some repayment actually happening. So this is a great plan, I think. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
Michael, could you? Go, did you have a map for the surface streets that were added for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
I do. I actually have some sort of tighter versions if we want to dive into some of the details here.
Not the local streets, but the major?
The arterials.
I saw it too.
So I broke up the maps into little four quadrants, so if we want to talk a little more detail. So this is the sort of the northwest quadrant of the city, sort of thing in light green.
I just wanted to see if Redlands Boulevard north of Ironwood was added to it. Okay, yeah, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, with the sixty, having the construction going on, we're using redlands, well, not we are. Trucks are using redlands more and more to bypass the sixty and sew our cars and to go onto San Mateo to take it out, sixty east land. So, you know, I just would hope in the future we add this area between Ironwood and Locust or up to the border because it's really tore up from the increased traffic from the sixty having that construction going on. But thank you so much for the work.
All right. Thank you, Michael. We'll go ahead and, public comments on this item?
Yes, Tom Drell.
Okay. Any other public comments?
He's the only one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, councilmembers and members of staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just last evening had a nice conversation. I've been trying to coordinate with our Public Works Director, Michael Wolf, about potholes. And he gave me a bit of his time and we had a little bit of a good dialogue and maybe some ideas. And but I learned quite a bit in a few short minutes. He was able to cover, he knows his stuff. So I thank you and Mr. Wolf. I still think I'm on to something, though. I haven't worked it out yet. I just want to get these funny ideas in my mind. They gotta germinate for a while, but anyhow, but I really commend this five-year plan. I think it's really neat to reach out that far and, you know, look at the city in a overall way. I do have one question, whether or not we debat, it's something I had suggested as a stopgap. You know, it's not a cure-all, but can avoid a lot of damage. And if that's something that's integrated, then maybe get some comment from staff. And then one other question, they're going to take comments for just things off the agenda later? Because I had put a slip in for that. They'll come later. Okay, that's right. Thank you very much. Oh, and we've got a very esteemed Public Works Director, I think he's still out in the hallway, Mr. Jim Smith. Worked for the city in the early days, I think about eighty-nine to about ninety-five, ninety-six. He was in charge of Capitol Project and Land Development. He went on to become a city engineer and then a wasn't it like community, Public Works Director out in Nando. He did have quite a career, but he had a lot to do with our early things. A good man, tall, slender guy out in the hallway. And Charles Rangel also worked, a couple of people from the past here. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Tom. Appreciate it. Okay, we will go to council deliberation on this item. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number, oh, you have a comment? Okay, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, again, just want to commend Public Works for the work that they're doing. I was talking with Michael earlier today about how I had some time, finally, to drive around, just, you know, to really look at what's going on and I did an entire loop around like half the city on all the new roads. It's just, it's amazing. It's beautiful. So looking forward to next year's phase of road repair, so thank you again.
Okay, entertain a motion by council? Okay, motion by Councilmember Dr. Thornton, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. And motion carries and we will go straight to consent calendar. Actually, we'll go back to consent calendar. We are now going to be in the consent calendar, which is sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed on the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D, N, E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. At this time, if there's any council items to be removed or council questions or comments, please press your request to speak. Okay, if there's none, then I'm going to ask if there's any public comments to the clerk. Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion by council to approve consent calendar. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Cabrera, seconded by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Please vote. And the motion carries. At this time, I also like to just give a round of applause to our new city manager, Mike Lee. Can you give him a round of applause? Congratulations. All right, we're going to go now to non-agenda items. Madam Clerk? Public comments on non-agenda?
Yes, sir, we have four. Dr. Grace Williams, Adam Eventov, and Rafael Burgueras, and Tom Drell.
Okay. Okay, that's the time now. Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Dr. Grace Williams, and as you know, campaign season is upon us. And I'm just here to introduce myself as one of your candidates for Congress. And just to give a brief introduction, I am an Army veteran, a working mom, a small business owner, and an economic developer. I've worked in the field of planning and economic development for nearly twenty years. Did more than ten years over at the March Air Reserve Base with March JPA. In fact, one of the biggest projects I worked on and facilitated there that I'm very proud of is the Heacock Channel. And I facilitated the partnerships with the county, with the city of Mauval, your excellent staff, who was right there alongside me in that project, protecting over three hundred homes just west of the military base and critical facilities at the military base. And also partnered up with leaders at the DoD, at the March Air Reserve Base. And I am looking forward to being an extension of Moreno Valley on the federal level, so we can do more projects like the Heacock Channel. Bring in funding for infrastructure and jobs training. Prepare the city for the twenty twenty-eight Olympics. Bring in funding to help offset costs for the infrastructure needs right here, so you can be successful in meeting the needs of your residents. My website information is drgraceforcongress.com, drgraceforcongress.com. My cell phone, my personal cell phone, is four one six zero zero three three, area code nine five one. I welcome everyone to contact me. I answer all questions personally and I meet with people personally for coffee. And I'm looking forward to learning from the residents of Mauval and partnering up with the city council and your excellent staff in making Mauval a place where dreams continue to soar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grace. Thank you. Next three people we have, Adam, followed by Rafael and Tom Drell. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff and community. Just want to take a moment of your time to introduce myself, but I've met so many of you already. But my name is Adam Eventov. I am your new SoCal Gas representative. I've left a stack of cards with the city clerk. And since I've already introduced myself to so many of you, I think I'll take this moment to just say that if you're looking for ways to save on your bill or some safety tips since it's winter and things are getting a little colder and the thermostat is getting pushed up, you can always visit www.socalgas.com/winter. Thank you for your time. Look forward to working with you and your community.
Great, thank you, Adam, and thank you for coming to our veterans event, I think it was, you were there. Thank you. Okay, we have Rafael, who's also one of our planning commissioners.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents. I came to say Merry Christmas to our city, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year. It's been a wonderful, wonderful year. I have to go back to twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen to look at what we have done in the city of Moreno Valley. We have created jobs. We have the amphitheater. We got the skateboard park. We had the parade. We had all the parks and recs facility. I thank Patty for her hard work and her staff that kept everything safe and clean for the residents to enjoy every day. I also thank Ms. Sanchez for the people that got hired in the city of Moreno Valley and all the promotions. I mean, there was so much that happened in twenty nineteen, including Marshall with all the reports, the finance, all the rewards that we have won. You know, people don't realize how much we have done in twenty nineteen, Mayor. We don't want to forget twenty nineteen because I look forward to seeing twenty twenty to be alike, to see the mayor and the council members to vote on things that we need in the city of Moreno Valley. It's so important. I also encourage to enjoy Mike Lee as our city manager because I got to know him as our I also encourage to enjoy Mike Lee as our city manager because I got to know him as a, as a, our person that looks for jobs and things like that. I mean, it's great. I mean, I'm gonna look forward to see that, to see him work more because he knows it well. He knows our city well. So it's gonna be good to see that go forward in twenty twenty, you know? I'm grateful for the, for the program, that the point of time. Okay, the one thing I've learned about homeless, there are many that don't want anything. They don't care about anything or themselves. All they care is about living in the street and begging for money. And they are those that do need help. But I believe that the way we can help them is educating them and training, training them. Because a lot of the people that lost their job don't have that technology of today. And that's how some of them lose their jobs. So when we go forward and we think about what we're gonna do in twenty twenty with this program, think about training. You can clean somebody up and feed them. But if you can't train them to help themselves, they'll go back to the streets. And that's what we don't want in the city of Moreno Valley. We don't want to see people that really want help to be living in the street with their families. That's something, and we know we could talk about the vets. They come out of the war and all they know is how to hold a gun. But we could teach them how to hold another tool, technology. We can help people in the city of Moreno Valley. Merry Christmas, Moreno Valley.
Okay, thank you, Rafael. Appreciate it. We have Tom Jarrell.
Tom Jarrell, again, speaking on behalf of myself and a bit for the Sundance Center where I spent a bit of time. Mary Gutierrez, council members, members of the staff in the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home or on the internet. First, I want to say, you know, we have our meetings and we have the honor to pray. You know, I listen to a bit of talk radio. Some of it's Christian radio. And it is amazing in how many parts of this world you can't do that unless you're of the given faith of that country. And so we are very honored. And I'm never intimidated. I pray to Jesus Christ, but I have no problem if a Muslim man comes up here or a lady or Buddhist. You know, they don't intimidate me. I, you know, they have their freedoms and I respect their, and it's a blessing to be able to practice your faith or not your faith at all in this country. So that's a real joy. It's something we should always embrace. And then I wanted to definitely say congratulations to Mike Lee and his new promotion. You know, when the room remote kicked off a couple of weeks ago and you started hearing rumblings, maybe change the city manner. You know, when you're in your local government, it's like, oh, where are we going from here? Because, you know, we've had some great ones and we've had some not so great ones. And so I didn't know, you know, who was gonna be on first. But I was very pleased when I found out it was gonna be Mr. Lee. Enjoyed his work at the economic development. I'm sure he's gonna do a great job. And I'm sure Mr. Brockton Company will give a strong right arm for him. And, you know, we've got a great bench there on our staff, so I, you know, doing a good job. You just gotta look at our Google list and the way we keep our budgets in line and keep grinding out the sausage for the public. So good luck to you, Michael. And, you know, Rafael mentioned about the many things happening. I had a surprise visit. My daughter came out to visit me last weekend. And she left here in nineteen eighty-six, a little girl. And when she left, there was no Sunny Meat Ranch. It was, well, we were just starting it. But there was effectively no Sunny Meat Ranch, no Moreno Valley Ranch, no mall, you know. And over dinner, I mentioned something about the hospital. And she goes, you have a hospital? And I said, no, we have two hospitals and a clinic. So she was really impressed. And a little sidebar, and I call this one of these little abstracts. She took note of how nice the people were. She lives in St. Louis. And, you know, you think of the Midwest being very congenial. And she said, boy, they were just so nice. And that's a good thing. You know, that, that's a, you know, it's an important part of a community fabric. So I appreciate it. And, you know, I'll give Deputy Brooks some kudos. I heard on the radio that a spiffy hat he wears is now regulation approved by the sheriff. So he changed the venue and sharp looked to him. And also glad to see a gas company rep here. And the homeless issue, I think the first step is help these people get dried out. That's a big problem. With that, I'll say Merry Christmas and wish us all a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom. Appreciate it. Merry Christmas to you, too. All right, we're gonna go straight to there's no reports for tonight, actually. We're gonna, those are gonna be moved to January when Mayor Protem and Councilmember Marquez are here. City managers' report.
Sure. Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank the mayor and the City Council for appointing me to serve as your city manager. I'm quite honored and I look forward to working with all of you. And since this is the last meeting of two thousand nineteen, I just want to recap some of the highlights of two thousand nineteen. Under the leadership of the mayor and the City Council, you continue to be fiscally responsible with eight consecutive years of balanced budget. In the budget, also approved funding for a third library, which would be located in Iris Plaza and is anticipated to be open in twenty twenty. You also approved funding for a civic center, amphitheater, which is also anticipated to be open in twenty twenty. This year, you opened a new skate park at Community Park, which was ahead of schedule and on budget. In the budget, you also approved funding for four additional police community service officers, and they're going through background checks and should start early next year. You also approved purchase of a new fire truck. In our Parks and Rec Department, we hosted over twenty-nine community events such as the Fourth of July, Springtastic, Youth Fest, Day of the Dead, Snow Day, and Holiday Tree Lighting. In our community development, we started the city's general plan called Mauval twenty forty, which will shape the future of Moreno Valley. In our Animal Service Department, over eighteen special adoption events resulting in one thousand one hundred seventy-two pets being adopted. We also had five low to no-cost vaccination clinics resulting in over three hundred fifty pets vaccinated against rabies and a hundred seventy-six pets microchipped. In our Public Works Department, talk about potholes. Over seventy-six hundred potholes were repaired in eighteen nineteen fiscal year and we're on track for similar amount for this year. Graffiti abatement, over eight hundred, eight thousand eight hundred graffiti locations abated in the same fiscal year. You also funded over thirty capital improvement plan projects totaling over thirty-four million dollars. Now, talking about awards, our city continued to win various awards with our Moreno Valley Utility Finance Department, Purchasing Technology Services, Parks and Community Services, Public Works Department, and Economic Development all have received various awards and accolades this year. Under the leadership of the mayor and the City Council, you continue to invest in higher Mauval workforce and education initiatives with funding for higher grad. You also developed a new higher veteran program in making Moreno Valley the best city for veterans and inland empire. And working in collaboration and strong partnership with Moreno Valley College, we saw the first full-year cohort of the Mayor's Challenge Mauval Learn Students to help our residents finish college. And this year, in partnership with the college, we launched the first iMake Innovation Center at the college so that our youth can be the future inventors such as Elon Musk and Steve Jobs. And I would think the mayor and the City Council, as the city continues to focus on economic development and attracting new businesses. This year, new businesses such as floor and decor and sit and sleep, new restaurants such as Safe House, Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, Jitters Coffee, and new hotels such as Holiday Inn Express and Fairfield Inn and Suites all opened this year. We also continue to bring new Fortune five hundred and international companies to our city, such as Lowe's Home Improvement, ResMed, Ross Dress for Less, all expanded this year in Moreno Valley. New businesses such as Kiko Bedding, international companies such as Legron, Solaris Paper, medical device maker Medline, and iHerb, a leading e-commerce company, all opened in Moreno Valley this year. And next year, we will see opening of Golden Corral Restaurant, our third cupcakes and espresso, both slated to open in early twenty twenty. We're gonna see a new dealership such as Car Pros Kia at the Auto Center. We're gonna see renovation at the mall. We're gonna see the district, which is already under construction, and Soaring Town Center with new tenant announcements in the very, very near future. And also in the medical sector, our Versailles University Health System, the two hundred thousand square feet medical office building is under construction and it's near completion. I also want to commend the leadership of the mayor and the City Council in the creation of twenty thousand new jobs in the past six years, making Moreno Valley an economic powerhouse in inland Southern California. In closing, on behalf of myself, the executive team and employees of the city of Moreno Valley, I want to wish the mayor, the City Council, and the residents of Moreno Valley happy holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate that report and kind words. Thank you. Report from City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, very briefly, good to be back. Secondly, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everything the best for the holidays of next year. Look forward to working with Mike and the rest of the staff and continuing to serve this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, that leads us to our concluding comments. And Councilmember, actually, who's first? I think it's Cabrera. Oh, okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for that report, Mike. That really showcases the amazing work that the city staff has done. I want to thank you all for standing alongside the city and helping me, especially in this first year, get some of these important programs created and implemented and doing the work for our residents. It's deeply appreciated. I am just so honored to still have this opportunity to have three more years to actually do work for Moreno Valley and our residents. I just want to use this time to just highlight a couple of things. We, I'm on the Public Safety Subcommittee and we actually talked about animal adoption. So starting today through the nineteenth, we have a home for the holidays pet adoption. So please take advantage of that program. It's available from ten AM to five thirty PM every day. You'll have special rates for the adoption of dogs and puppies and cats and kittens. Additionally, after the New Year, January eighth through ninth, we'll have a New Year's pet adoption. I mean, just want to let you know this is something that's very important to the city, that not only do we get our animals adopted, but that all of our animals are chipped. Every single animal needs to be chipped. And then we make initiative that if an animal is found and it's chipped, to re-ignite them with the owner instead of bringing them through the shelter. So that is one of the benefits. So please get your animal chipped, bring them down to the shelter to take advantage of that. Additionally, we had a great report from our fire. Our battalion chief mentioned that fires are on the decrease. Normally during this time of year, fires, home fires, residential fires increase. And I was asking, I was taught growing up that fires were due to Christmas trees and lighting. So every night, I always unplug all my Christmas tree lights. And he was mentioning also about that this is the time of year that a lot of people use their chimney, right? So please make sure that if it's a gas fireplace, you're not putting wood in there, that you're clearing your chimney out to not cause your house to have residential fires, so we can keep up our rates. And then lastly, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone. Please stay safe on the roads. There's gonna be a lot of driving and commuting. Please do not drink and drive. Do not, try not to be intoxicated concerning smoking things that make you high and dry. Use Uber, use Lyft. No distracting driving. We want to have no deaths. That's the goal. No deaths during this holiday season. So please, everyone, try to make it safely back home. And I'm looking forward to coming back in the New Year and doing some of those things that we talked about for twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. We have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, like Tom mentioned, I saw on the news somewhere that our sheriff department, specifically Deputy Brooks, was making a big name for himself in the area because of the hats. He's, he's setting a trend for Southern California. So thank you. Thank you for that, Deputy. Next, our tree lighting ceremony that we had, what, two Saturdays ago now, I believe. It was very nice. You know, a lot of really good feedback. It had to be relocated temporarily or maybe permanently due to the construction of the amphitheater. And, you know, it was nice as always. It was a really, really nice event. The kids, the children is what makes it even better because whenever they see Santa on the screen, I mean, they go crazy. You know, they start laughing and they start cheering. So it was beautiful. And so I'm looking forward to that for next year. Before you know it, it's gonna be here again. So that was nice. I attended the state of the district for Valverde Unified. You know, some of you may know that that district goes into both the communities of Paris and Moreno Valley. It goes into my district as well. And so I just, I love what they have going on over there. They're doing so many different things, you know, from high application percentage when it comes to FAFSA graduation rates. And also what they're doing with their police department is really amazing, really taking a heavy approach on that community-oriented policing. So it's amazing to see all the things that they're doing. And they're actually building a new facility across the street from the current, I believe it's Valverde High School. They're building an actual board meeting room. And so they're looking forward to, I think it's gonna open next year. So that was this past week. And also, I attended a BIA, the Building Industry Association Legislative Affairs Luncheon. Our keynote speaker was Senator Richard Roth. So he had a lot to say, you know, a lot to say, giving us an update about the things that he's worked on and kind of foreseeing what he's gonna be working on this next legislative year. And the big topic was housing. You know, the big topic was housing and how we deal with that and trying to see what, if any, bills are gonna be coming back for a second try and any potential new bills that are gonna be coming out. So it was very informative. And definitely, it's a tough, it's a tough issue to tackle. But the good thing is that the conversations are being had. They're actively being had up in Sacramento. And all the different actors are trying to figure out solutions to this situation that we're in as a state. So I have faith that, that there will be a new slate of bills that will be signed come next, next year. And we'll continue to increase our supply of housing here in this state. And also, just on a side note, I think we've mentioned it before, but both Dr. Thornton and I will be on the Housing and Economic Development Committee for the League of California Cities. So we'll both be advocating on behalf of Moreno Valley in that capacity next year. Also, on the topic of Senator Roth, today they had a senior scam stopper event at the Senior Center. It was well-attended. You know, they're always doing things here for our community. So just want to thank Senator Roth. And we actually have a representative from his office here tonight as well. So thank you all for what you do. I'm almost there, almost there. So Operation Big Blessings is a nonprofit located here in the city. And for a few Sundays now, they've been doing, they've been offering free showers for homeless individuals here in the city. And I just, I'm so grateful to them, you know, for putting this together out of their own funding. They're giving away clothes, you know, hoodies, jackets, pants, everything, and toiletries to any homeless folks here in the community. And I don't know how many they had this past Sunday, but two Sundays ago, they had about fifteen people that actually came and took showers at their, the little trailer that they have. So hoping, you know, that that benefits the community and actually helps and that some of these people, if they get the resource guide, they can, you know, find those resources and get off of the street. So just a shout out for them. Census event is coming on February first is a tentative date for next year. We're really trying to push that and educate the community and get the word out regarding the importance of the census. We're working with Senator Roth's office, a few other partners here in the community as well. So we'll be sharing that information here pretty soon. Also, Mike Lee, congratulations as well from me. Definitely look forward to working with you. And I've already thanked you a bunch of times, but we can't thank you all enough. And, you know, I'm looking forward to this next year because there's a lot of things coming. You already mentioned a lot of them. I'll kind of just hit some of the points that I had, but new amphitheater is opening next summer. A new library is opening up. Four new community service officers are on the way. The corridor project, the district with floor and decor, more road repairs, the town center that we're working on, the general plan update. I mean, there's just so much. We thought this year was good. Wait until next year. There's gonna be a lot more ribbon cuttings next year. So it's exciting. And with that, just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Safe travels. Really enjoy that time that you get to spend with your family. Eat a little bit for me, you know, on my behalf. And Happy New Year to everyone as well.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. And just on that spirit as well, as far as the holidays, I'm so blessed to still continue to be your mayor of the city, city of Moreno Valley. You know, we continue to grow in such a growing city. You know, with the twenty thousand new jobs, you know, in just the last six years, fifty percent only developed of the community. We have a general plan that we're actually working on, you know, and this general plan is going to really be the vision, you know, for our community. And my vision for it is that we're gonna have, that this is going to be a destination, a regional destination for various cities throughout the region. And then we're gonna have, obviously, the town center, like Mike mentioned, and the amphitheater. And those are huge, huge, huge things that other cities, I mean, just envy us, you know, because they wish that they could be doing you know, because they wish that they could be doing those types of things. But we're going to be doing those things. And so, as the mayor, I'm super excited and really, really thrilled. I'm also thrilled of, you know, the colleagues that I have here as well, and the team that we have in moving this city forward. As far as a few different things that kind of took place, I did have several speaking engagements the last couple of weeks, but I'll just highlight one. One was on the Climate Resiliency Symposium. So, I want to thank the city clerk who attended that with me. And so, we actually talked about the different natural disasters that can occur, and especially in our area, you know, which we're prone to earthquakes and fires and those kinds of things. So, we got to keep that in mind. Make sure that you reach out to our CERT office, you know, or you get the CERT training. You know, that's really, really important as well. And all of those, we have packets and a lot of information on that. So, that's very, very important, and keep that in mind. Now, if you notice, Councilmember, actually, Mayor Protem Baca is not here tonight. And that's because unfortunately, her aunt passed away. So, I want to close the meeting in her memory, and her aunt's name is Virginia Baca. So, we'll go ahead and close the meeting, and adjourn the meeting at six fifty PM in memory of Virginia Baca.